Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Perth County Council, the 16th day of March. I'd like to call our meeting to order. If everyone could please bow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. Feed our land acknowledgements. We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Onanasa Bay, who have a longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse Indigenous and Matias and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and a continued stewardship on the land on which we live and work. Okay, if you have pecuniary interest, you can disclose that now or as the meeting goes along. We have a motion that we need to confirm the agenda that March 16th agenda be approved. Moved by Councillor Aitchison, second by Councillor Duncan, all in favor. Carried. Okay, we have 10 items on our consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone would like pulled or they have questions on? Seeing nothing, we have a motion that council receives a consent agenda items 6.1 to 6.10, and approves of March 2nd, 2023 council minutes, moved by Deputy Warden Kellam, second by Councillor McDermott, all in favor. Carried. Okay, we do have a planning public meeting this morning. And I think that is Susannah, right? Susannah, if you want to come up near to the table and, oh, I'm sorry, I've got a couple little details here first. Regular council recess for the purpose of holding a planning public meeting at approximately 9:02. Moved by Councillor Smith, second by Councillor Mackenzie, all in favor. Carried. Okay, so we'll call the public meeting to order. We need a motion to approve that the OPA 215 public meeting, March 16th, 2023 agenda be approved. Moved by Councillor Orr, second by Councillor Kassenberg, all in favor. Carried. Okay, then we have the minutes from our last public meeting. And then we have a motion that Perth County Council approves the minutes for March 2nd, 2023 public meeting, OPA 211. Moved by Councillor Trunkowski, second by Councillor Mackenzie. Is there any questions on those minutes? No questions, all in favor. Carried. Okay, so now we're going to get to the report. Susannah, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Warden Eggers, and good morning, council. This is an official, a public meeting for official plan amendment 215, which is a property in Shakespeare. And while Sean brings up the slides, the property is currently designated institutional recreational in the Perth County Official Plan, and the application for official plan amendment is to change the property, the designation on the property from institutional recreational to residential. The purpose of this amendment is to permit the development of a residential plan of subdivision. We're not considering the plan of subdivision application today, but that is helpful background as you see the presentation. So if we go to the next slide, shows the location of the subject property. It's in the middle of Shakespeare, on the west side of Shakespeare, and it's at the end of William Shakespeare Street, west of Gold Street. So if we go to the next slide. This is the property outlined in blue. The area of the property is 0.65 hectares, which is about 1.6 acres. And as I mentioned, it's currently designated institutional recreational, and it's been, the application is to change the designation to residential. Go to the next slide. So this is the mapping in the Perth County Official Plan. So the area that's subject to the amendment is is outlined in the hash black marks. The property continues further to the west. However, that area is already designated residential. So the area of the property that's currently designated institutional recreational is proposed to be amended to residential. Okay, so we go to the next slide. So this is an air photo of the site. This photo has been provided by the applicant. The applicant's planner is Carolyn Baker, and she's here today, so she can answer any specific questions as well. So the property you can see is horseshoe shaped, and it wraps around the end of William Shakespeare Street. Surrounding the property is resident, existing residential development, and the Optimist Park is to the south. We go to the next slide. Again, we're not considering the plan of subdivision application today, and for background, this is the plan of subdivision that is proposed following the designation change to residential. So there are four lots that are proposed for a single detached dwellings, eight lots that are proposed for semi-detached dwellings for a total of 12 new residential homes. Go to the next slide. So this is a photo of the site, a snowy day in February, standing on the west end of William Shakespeare Street, looking at the subject property. You can see that it's surrounded by residential development. And if we go to the next slide, this is looking east on William Shakespeare Street. If we go to the next slide, this is looking south, so you can see the optimist fall. So the red, so you can see on the star where I was standing, and I'm looking south towards the optimist fall, and then the second, the photo on the left is a picture standing in the parking lot, looking at the optimist fall. You can see the proximity. The next slide. So we have received, the, the application was considered at the regular meeting of the Township of Perth East Council on February 7th. Perth East Council is recommending that the application be approved. Upper Thames Conservation Authority has provided comments, and they have no concerns. And the Ministry of Transportation has also responded, and a building and land use permit is required. MTO's comments are in the package. The Planning Department has no concerns with regards to the amendment, and the recommendation for today is that public meeting be held in order to receive comments from the public, and providing there are no outstanding concerns, Planning Department would return at a subsequent council meeting with a recommendation for the application. So those are all my comments, and I'm certainly available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Susannah. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition? And I request that they give their name and address for the record when they are recognized, speaking against. Seeing no one, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application other than the applicant or the applicant's agent, and I request that they give their name and address for the record when they are recognized. Seeing no one, does the applicant or the applicant's agent have any comments in respect to the application? Morning Caroline, if you'd like to sit there up there by Susannah.
Morning, Warden, members of County Council. My name is Caroline Baker from Baker Planning Group. I'm representing the owners of the property with respect to the official plan amendment application before you this morning. Ms. Reed provided a very fulsome and thorough presentation, so not to take too much time, I won't repeat some of the comments. I just wanted to add that two things. As part of the application, the owners have retained MTE to assist with surveying and engineering, as well as Thomas Arnold, who prepared the stage one and two archaeological assessment, which has been cleared by the ministry. The second piece that I wanted to add is just a little bit of a nuance, a unique application. Certainly, the property is already zoned residential and is zoned to permit the form of development and the use that is proposed through the plan of subdivision. My view, the official plan isn't a technical official plan amendment. It's a remnant designation from former ownership. But certainly, the zoning already permits the use, and the official plan amendment will essentially, for lack of a better term, clean up the designation on the site to align with the current zoning and facilitate the future draft plan of subdivision application, which will be back before you at a later date. But again, if you'd answer any questions, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Caroline. Are there any questions from members of council? Nope, seeing no questions. We do have a motion that council receives the Perth County Official Plan Amendment, number 215-2574835, Ontario Limited, report for land described as part lot 22 concession one, regular plan 333, and all lots 137 and 165, part of lot 166, Southeast Hope Ward, Township of Perth East, and that council receives comments from the public from considering regarding official plan amendment number 215 to the County of Perth Official Plan affecting lands described as part lot 22 concession one, regular plan 333, and all lots of 137, 138, and 165, part of lot 166, Southeast Hope Ward, Township of Perth East. We were in a seconder, moved by Councillor Aitchison, second by Councillor McDermott. Any more comments or questions? All in favor. Carried. Okay, thanks, ladies. So the public meeting will be adjourned at 9:11. Moved by Councillor McDermott, second by Councillor Trunkowski, all in favor. Carried. And the council reconvene at approximately 9:11. Moved by Councillor Aitchison, second by Councillor Smith. Those in favor. Carried. Okay, we're back in regular council, and then the next item on our agenda, we have a allegation, and we have a presentation from the Rotary Club of Stratford, Perth County Green Legacy Program proposal. So I believe Mr. Thompson is with us.
He's on.
Like, Mr. Shackleton, I'm sorry. If you would like to sit up at the table, please, that would be great, and we're all ready for your presentation.
Does he sit or stand?
Whatever is easier for you.
I'm Brent Shackleton. I'm not here with Doug Thompson, my partner. At any rate, we're representing the Rotary Club of Stratford. We're known for taking on big projects throughout the area, such as the Rotary Hospice, Rotary Complex, the Rested House. And our newest initiative is an environmental-based initiative, and we're calling it the Perth County Green Legacy Program. And we'll go to the next slide. Perth County right now has a problem. It's not a new problem. But we are under canopyed drastically. We are a very agricultural-rich county, but we are sitting at less than 9% canopy coverage in the county. These are the county's numbers, not mine. And, and I would argue they're probably even less than 9%. Provincial recommendation is 30%. So we are way off the target on that. In the Climate Action Plan that was developed, and I believe was adopted by this county, one of the issues identified as a target to achieving greenhouse gas emission, lower greenhouse gas emissions, was for increased canopy coverage. So what we're here to do today is bring you an opportunity, I would like to call it. We want to work in partnership with the county. This is a project that's beyond the scope of our club alone to tackle. So we need the county. We need all the lower-tier municipalities. I would even involve the city of Stratford, Town of St. Mary's, Upper Thames. We need the school boards, other service clubs, businesses, individuals to collectively get on board to work with this project. And what we're proposing to do is literally, this is not a two-year project, five-year project, 10-year, this is ongoing. The scope of this project is so big that it is an, is an ongoing project that is a forever project. And will require the planting of millions of trees. All of you don't have to drive too far to see the effects of the ashbore disease in the last few years. Those trees are dead, they're gone, and they're not being replaced. And right now, the county does not have programs in place to to cover those losses. We have pre-preservation programs. Some municipalities are offering tree planting programs, but they fall far short of what is actually needed. And again, I go back to that statement. If we're going to achieve carbon reduction, we need to be planting trees on a mass scale. So the good news is, this has already been done. So we'll go to the next slide. Our neighboring county, the County of Wellington, has created a program where they have been planting trees from seedlings. And I'll just back up a bit. There is a shortage of trees right now throughout the province, as in every industry, there seems to be a shortage. Trees is one of them. What we're trying to achieve is planting of native species. So our maples and our oaks and our birch trees, all of the walnuts. We'd like to keep everything native to what this area is used to. So the Wellington County project started back in 2004. It was to celebrate the 150th anniversary of the, of the county. And the warden at the time came up with the idea of planting 150,000 trees. So in order to do that, they ended up building a greenhouse on lands that were donated to the county. And from there, they started growing seedlings into saplings and then planting trees. They worked with the, the county, provided the budget to do this. The program was so successful that it has carried on to this date. And there's a short video I'll show you shortly, just to give you a better idea. But they basically are planting 100, they're up to 165,000 trees a year that they are planting throughout the county. They work with volunteers. A big component of this program is working with the schools. They get kids from a young age. They give them the seeds to, to plant. They keep them for the school year, and at the end of the school year, they gather them up and put them back in the greenhouses to carry on growing. But what it does, it instills the value of trees at a young age for kids to grow up and appreciate their value. The older kids, the high school kids, they do the actual planting. All of the trees, this is the great project idea of this, they're free to all the residents of Wellington County. So if you're a farmer and you want 100 trees, 200 trees, you put your order in, you go pick them up and you plant them. There's my partner, Mr. Thompson. So they're free of charge. To date, the county's planted over 3 million trees. And it's been recognized by the United Nations. That's how impactful this program has been. So we have visited the, the nursery. And I encourage any of you to, if you're interested, to have a, have a visit. It's a program that's been in place now for close to 20 years. They've worked out a lot of the bugs and the problems throughout the, throughout the years. It's one I'm looking at this county at adopting and, and building. And City of London is also looking at a similar project, as well as other municipalities. And just to give you a quick overview, I think that we can play that video. It'll give you a sense of what they're doing. Stop sharing.
Our point is, it's more embedding anymore, so.
No worries. We don't, we don't have to, I don't want to hold up time, because I know I've only got a small window here to make this presentation. So basically, the Wellington project has been going now for close to 10 years, or sorry, 20 years. They started small and they grew the project. They now have two facilities, because it is quite a county. They have one in North Wellington and one down in Questlunch. So they've got two facilities. They have a staff of about eight full-time and full and part-time staff. They have, as I say, an army of volunteers, and, and that includes school kids, it includes service clubs, it includes gardeners that want to come and participate in this program. Their budget right now is sitting at about $850,000. I'm not here to ask for $850,000 from the county. But I am here to say, let's, we need to do this, number one. But let's start with a realistic number, say 50,000, maybe it's 75,000 or 100,000, maybe it's a third of that budget. But it needs to be done. And I'm speaking not only as a Rotarian, as a, as a concerned environmentalist, I'm also speaking as a, as a resident of this county, as a farmer. I would gladly pay an increase in taxes to support this program. And what do I get in return? I can go and get trees to plant on my farm. And that's, that's kind of the carrot to get people to, to get involved in this program. So times of the essence, this should have been done years and years and years ago, but it hasn't. It's not too late, but it does need to happen, and it needs to happen now. And I hate that old saying, "The best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago," but this is so true. We're all in a global climate crisis, and that's why we need to do this now. And I don't want you to look at this as a cost. I'd rather you look at this as an investment. This is your legacy. This group here, this council, has the power to make an impactful change. Not, not for today, but for the next generation and the next generations. And once we're all gone, forgotten, there will be a million reminders of what you did here. So I encourage you, I'll tell you right now, the county or the Rotary Club of Stratford does not like to take no for an answer. We, we were told, no, we can't have a hospice for years and years by the powers that be. And here we are with a Rotary hospice. This has to happen. What I would propose we do, we want to work in partnership with the county. This is why I say it's an opportunity for the county, because you've got willing partners to work with you to create a steering committee to get this off the ground and, and make this a reality. So that's my presentation. Doug, do you have anything you'd like to add? Senator Doug Thompson, he's a fellow and member on a Rotary Environment Committee.
Hi.
Senator Thompson, would you please stand up there by Mr. Shackleton, so that we can see you and hear you.
I have to admit, I'm not a farmer, but I, I do follow the science, and I'm involved in a number of environmental groups in Stratford, all of which are behind this project. Now, I think the county has a major role to play in climate change. I think we all realize that this is going to be a challenge for farmers going forward. With increased temperatures, with, with flooding, with, with drought. And the county has a major role to play in this whole affair. For example, we can store more carbon underground than we can above ground. That's part of the solution to this problem. So I would encourage everybody to think about benefits that you'll have going forward, you know, as far as being able to preserve the environment, being able to farm more effectively and, and help save the planet. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from members of council? Councillor Smith?
Not necessarily a question. Just, I noticed, thanks again, Mr. Shackleton, for your presentation. Very supportive of this. Just, you mentioned the Upper Thames Conservation Authority. They're obviously, they have the biggest area in Perth County. We're also, we're the Grand River Conservation Authority and the Maitland Valley Conservation Authority. So just making sure that you, we want to try and include them as well. I know the Grand River, they, I said on that board, they've, they've planted 13 million trees in 50 years, and they, they plant 100,000 every year, obviously because of a number of different reasons. The ashbore is one of the big ones, but very supportive of this, so just making sure that we, I'm very supportive and that we include those other authorities as well, Brett.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Kessenberg?
Yes, again, thank you for the interesting presentation. I am wondering at this point in time whether we should request staff to bring forward a report that would sketch out some, some details of a potential Perth County program. I'm not sure at this point, of course, because we have other sustainability matters before us in the county, but if there's will from my colleagues, perhaps we could ask for a report from staff about tentative for steps and collaboration with the Rotary Group.
Okay, Councillor Aitchison?
Like, sort of had a discussion with Mr. Shackleton here a couple, three weeks ago. We're doing our little meeting of Perth South for the project we're working on, sustainability and et cetera. And we talked about it, and, you know, he's right, or the Rotary Club's right, we, we need to plant more trees, and I fully support that. And I kind of, along with what Councillor Kassenberg had just said, I think, you know, I hate saying, I'll bring back a report. I think more than just a report, you kind of have to have sort of a ballpark budget of how to get this started, you know? And I'm sure the Rotary Club would be here in County of Wellington, more than happy to supply some information, like how small were they when they started? Like, I know they weren't at 150,000 trees. They were probably in the low thousands. And you're right, the problem is getting the seedlings, because I have a supply that you plant a lot of oak seedlings every year, but they're tough to keep living when you've got rabbits in the countryside. Not gonna lie. But you also mentioned that the young kids were growing the seedlings, and the high school kids perhaps were planting it. So it's not just a operation that you'd want to include just lower tier or upper tier. I think you'd want to get the school board involved.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's, I know it can be a challenge at times too, but you, you just kind of have to come up with a budget, and you know, what's a greenhouse going to cost, you know? Have we got a spot where we can stick it, like on a public works facility where we got space? There's places probably to put it. And you could get a lot of donations for this, and I believe there is some government grants federally that we can put towards, as in, am I not correct?
The federal government's quite supportive of this. They have what's called the 2 Billion Tree Program. They are in the provincial government, oh, excuse me, also had a program similar to this, but the Ford Government axed it. But the federal government has stepped in to, to replace what the provincial government dropped. So there is, yes, there is federal funds available. There are funds available from TD Bank. They have green projects. They support all the time. The money's out there. It needs to be asked, and but we need a project worthy to, to get the funds for. So I have no doubt there will be, and Rotary, I mean, we undress all the time for various projects. This is, as I say, it's not in any single project. This is all businesses, individuals. You will receive tons of support because who can say anything against planting trees? Honestly, it's, it's a there should be no objections to it. The devils are in the details, though. You're right. We need to find a site. We need to have a budget. We need to hire someone to coordinate it. And this is where I would like, as I say, we're here to help in any capacity we can on that regard, but this needs to happen. To have a study done, seeing if we should plant trees or not. We're beyond that. We need to have trees. We need to form a, I mean, ideally, I'd love to have a greenhouse built this time next spring. So that's, that's why I'm saying there's a sense of urgency on this. And happy to sit down and form a committee with, with the county if we can, to work out those details and make this happen. But you, but I, I respect, everything comes down to dollars and, and that has to be worked into next year's budget. And I'm saying personally, as a taxpayer, I would not be opposed to a slight increase to make this happen.
Okay, Councillor Trunkowski?
Thank you through you, Warden Eggers. Thanks, Mr. Shackleton, Mr. Thompson, for your presentation. Further to Councillor Aitchison's comments, going back to the stewardship program in-person sessions that we had, and you were, you attended.
You attended at the Pur South. Uh, session and we did discuss trees, what your presentation, it was discussed, parts of it were discussed at that in-person session. I guess what I can offer is that the common thread, like the stewardship uh program coordinators uh has a draft. A draft report. That has yet to go through, invented through the stewardship or the egg working committee for the county. Um, but what I can tell you is in that draft report, the common thread. Through all the input sessions, personal or person-to-person input sessions. And the surveys, the common thread was planting trees. So. There's some synergies at work here, um, through the stewardship program, work that we've done so far. And through uh your proposal for a partnership. So there looks like there's some good synergies that are coming, coming together at the right time to come up with a, a solution.
And, 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 and we need the, those synergies, that's why we need. The Upper Thames and the conservation groups and the county and the municipalities and. The school boards and the businesses and the, and quite frankly, the farmers. We need the farmers to be on board with this. Because they, they control the vast majority of land here, so.
And, and to your point that there's a lot of moving parts that we, we need to. Going back to Jim's point there, like, we need to have a, a structured. Structured approach to it in order for it to work. And I guess the only other comment I can offer at this time is uh the Sustainable Canadian Agricultural Partnership, the SCAP program. That was agreed to um. As part of the Guelph Statement in twenty twenty-one between the Federal Agriculture Ministry and the Provincial Ministers. That programming, I think it was announced last week. And I contacted someone at the Ontario Soils and Probst Improvement Association. She said that the agreements have been signed between. Agriculture Canada and OMAFRA, but now the details are still being developed. So we're, I guess, my interest was to see if things like implanting were part of that programming and.
There's potential for funds?
Well, they're waiting for the details, announcements, broad announcements have been made, but like, like we've said here today, the devil's in the details. But we're waiting to see what, what avenues are available under SCAP at the moment. I just, just thought I'd bring that to everyone's attention.
Hey, Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, Warden Naggetts, and, and I fully support this program. I think it's a, I think it's a definitely an ambitious program. But I think that uh, we, we have room for this and as Chair of the Maitland Valley Conservation Authority, I would really love to uh. Have Rotary come to our, our, maybe one of our board meetings and speak to the board about how we could cooperate in, in be involved in this program. Um, Mr. Shackleton, if you're interested in that, uh, you get ahold of me as the Chair or the uh. The staff there.
Yes, be happy to, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Acheson?
Last comment through the. Brett just kind of hit on there a minute ago, so he mentioned the farmers have all the land. And I know we had that discussion at our meeting in Pur South, who was a farmer there, as soon as he went. Planting trees on my farmland, well, the hairs kind of go up on the back of their necks. They get a little excited when they can sell soybeans for twenty-one with a five dollar premium. Let's be honest, but it, you can plant trees on, in the, in the rural areas without interrupting farmland. We've got, we planted hundreds around our buildings and. Dance lines, et cetera, et cetera, but it's not just the rural area. So like, I'm going to take you to a couple new subdivisions in Stratford. Everything was wiped clean. They build all these houses, but how many trees do you see planted? None.
And we've had a conversation with uh Quinn Malott about that. Stratford is. Again, depending on the numbers, are sitting at close to thirty percent canopy coverage for the city. Not so much in the industrial areas and certainly not in the new subdivisions. Um, but he'll admit there, there, there's always room to grow. And again, I think this can be a collaboration, I should back up, the Wellington Project does not include the City of Guelph. Guelph's its own entity, of course, is, is Stratford. But I would, I would not be hesitant to involve the City of Stratford and the Town of St. Mary's. In this program and even to can, help to contribute to, to some of the, the costs of it. Because they can benefit from it as well.
I would agree that, you know, it is a challenge, um, these new developments, but we're working on it, I think as a group as well to try and change that. Unfortunately, the uh, or the provincial government is helping us in that regard.
Do you think it'd be a great benefit around residential building, you get shade?
Absolutely.
In the summer times, you get. Twice as much in the winter time, it kind of slows the wind down. You're not running your heat quite so much, like it's, like we've got windbreaks all around the buildings.
It can lower the temperature several degrees in a community. Excuse me, other questions? Counselor McDermott?
Uh, no, I uh, know that in the report that the council was talking about, that it said that one of the. Reasons that maybe there's not more trees done is because our tree bylaw. And I know I ain't planting a tree if it's not my tree. So once you plant enough trees, it covers natural heritage area, and then all of a sudden you're constrained. By what you can do and can't do. So might have to look at that bylaw too.
Okay. Or?
Uh, through the warden, um, it, it would make sense to do a referral motion to staff. So that we can address the, we can look at the program that's uh recommended. We can look at our um current forestry program. You will find over the next several weeks that our staff will be out to each of the local municipalities. Providing an overview of the county's current uh forestry program and tree bylaw. And um, providing details about that, how it works, how we work with the loggers. Um, to um, get the notice of intent to cut trees, all of those details. And we could take a look at that in um, regard to. Excuse me, the stewardship program as well as our climate change um document.
Counselor Kasonberg?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to move that, I think, um, float that onto the floor here. Um, if, if the timing is right to Warden Naggetts, uh, that we refer to staff, uh. Um, the information that was received from the Rotary Club uh for the development of a report that would scope. Um, the, the various issues, including review of forestry bylaw. The um, the, the stewardship project and more, so that this council can best understand. Um, uh, some potential next steps.
Okay, do we have a second here? Counselor Acheson? There any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Thanks, gentlemen, for your presentation. Hey, Tyler wants us to receive, council receives the first county green legacy program proposal presentation for information. Moved by Counselor Jankowski, second by Counselor McKenzie, all in favor? Carried. Okay, now we're going to move on to staff reports and the first one under the C A O is the Galbreath Camp. So Lori, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Uh, so this report, I was okay when this uh originally came to council. So this is a follow-up report. I understand that council is looking for additional details. Um, just a few key reports, I know we have Chris Snell and Amy Gangel uh will be on the line, um. Yep, should be on the line to provide clarification or respond to council questions. So this is a follow-up where it is North Perth asking for county support in the amount of thirteen thousand. I know that was requested to clarify. It's seed funding for their project, the project is a partnership between North Perth. The Conservation Authority, um, parties would explore options for multi-use on the property. Includes the creation of outdoor uh educational environment. The return of the summer day camp, additional passive recreation options such as trails, fishing, canoeing. Conservation Authority would maintain ownership in the land and uh North Perth. Would take care of the operations, facility and trail maintenance and whole summer day camp. North Perth has been in contact with local school boards, plan to seek uh donations, contributory funding. From adjacent municipalities external to Perth and other grant opportunities. Statistics Canada, uh, the reference in there is an estimated fourteen thousand five hundred children reside in Perth County. If the funding source was approved, um. The, the source would be the can, the county's general reserve. And if council approved this funding request, it is not making any uh commitment to additional funds in the future. This is a wow, one-time ask currently, uh, it doesn't uh mean that uh North Perth would never come back. And ask for more, but if you approve the thirteen thousand dollar request, um, it doesn't commit you to future asks.
Okay, questions of the report? Counselor Acheson?
Just for clarification. You said Statscan said there was fourteen thousand children in Perth County. I struggle with that number, because I've looked at Statscan and the number of children in Pur South, et cetera. We're all trying to retain the youth. What's the age bracket that that number in counting processes?
Uh, gen, so through the warden, generally, uh, children would be twelve and under. Youth is above. And I understand that youth would be um, uh, secured to run the day camps to, to be the team leaders in the day camp. But children, the definition of, of children would be twelve and under.
Okay, other questions? No questions? But we do have a motion, let's see where that goes, and if someone wants something different, they'll have to. Tell me, council receives a Galbreath Camp contribution request report. We have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor McDermott, second by Counselor Orr. Any more comments or questions? Counselor Duncan?
Um, I'm wondering if I could make an amendment to that, uh, to that motion? I'd like, like to make an amendment that the, the county support the uh, the program in, in the, the ask from North Perth.
Okay, do we have a seconder? Deputy Warden Callum? Any more comments or questions? I have one question, we have a camp in Perth East, are we going to get money from the county too if we come with a presentation? There are other camps in other municipalities, just so everyone is aware of that. Any more questions?
Yeah, I have one, so that amendment is part of the original motion.
Yeah. So the amendment's read first. We vote on the amendment, if it's passed, then we vote on the whole motion. That's how the procedure goes. Okay, so the amendment is. Tyler, read it again?
Second, so, no, that's all, so through the order that council support the program put forward. By North Perth Galbreath Camp Contribution.
Thirteen thousand.
Do you want that number specified? Do you want the number in there, Matt? Specified?
And the time, one year.
Pardon?
And the time as well, one year.
And the time for one year?
Yes.
Okay, so the amendment is for thirteen thousand dollars for one year. Okay, any more questions? Counselor Chinkowski?
Um, I, through you, Warden, uh, when this subject was brought forward the last. Uh, time at County Council. Uh, one of my questions was, uh. I guess towards a business plan, um. It's been noted that there's other camps in the county. Uh, Perth East being one, there's several others, so my concern would be. Uh, that this initiative would be competing with other initiatives that are already. Uh, in operation in the county, so um, I'm just concerned about uh. How this, how this would fit in with the existing uh day camps and similar services that are. Provided in the area and, and to that end, um, just concerned about what the business model looks like for viability.
Pardon? We do have Chris Snell with us this morning, maybe Chris, you can answer that question, I see your hands up.
Thank you. Warden Naggetts and, and good morning, County Council. Um, this isn't meant to compete against other summer day camps, um, we obviously offer our own summer day camps in North Perth. We are hoping to work with um. Local municipalities to augment um. The day camp experiences, so we could offer, Galbreath could be a place where existing day camps could, could use. Um, alternatively as well, um, Galbreath was in operation for many years. Kids through um, across Perth County and um. Our neighboring counties attended the Galbreath Camp. Um, so um, right now we have a significant shortage um in day camp spaces and childcare spaces across the province, I believe. The current number um from the CS Stratford is close to the eighteen hundred, um, families are waiting um for childcare. So significantly, there are still a number of gaps in, in the system. Um, so we're always looking for opportunities to increase that. Um, so I, I don't think we're looking to compete against existing day camps and, and hopefully we can help support existing day camps and then also. Um, I think the opportu, opportunity for forest schools is also something that we're still interested in exploring and ATLAS Forest. School is one of our partners has um, so, so far supported us in this venture.
Okay, other questions from members of council? So first we're voting on the amendment and the amendment is for thirteen thousand dollars from the county for one year. All in favor of that amendment? Two, four, six, and that is carried. Okay, and then the main motion that we receive the Galbreath Camp Contribution Request Report. With giving a thirteen thousand dollars for one year. Moved by. Counselors.
That was already moved inside.
All right, sorry, sorry, we already had a move in a second or so. All in favor of that? Carried. Okay? Thank you. Okay, our next report is a significant weather and event and road communications and we have uh Rick with us this morning. Are you giving that presentation? If you want to come up to the table, please, and John? And Sarah, okay.
Uh, good morning, I guess I'll start, um, through you, Warden, I'd like to just uh bring this report. We're kind of calling file report for the December signal weather event. Um, I also have heard many of the details regarding the signal weather event. My last presentation. This is really a high level, um. For myself and then touching on some of the communication efforts we've undertaken and will continue. Um, as we know, we had a signal weather in December, uh, it was predicted very early. It was one of the only times in recent memory that Environment Canada got it right. Um, they predicted a big event, we got a big event, um, so kudos to them. Uh, a lot of things went into this event when we got predictions and when they, when they really drove the seriousness of this home. Um, we worked with lower, lower tier municipalities to. Performing center arrangements. Um, we sent out some public education announcements in advance of this, uh, through the iCompass site. Uh, and I provided some information to lower tiers that they could send it to their communities, but compared to. You know, things like seven to hour kits, making sure your, your exhaust outside are kept clearly clear, um, all that sort of. Education information, so a lot of stuff went into the, to creating smoother event before it happened. Uh, and again, as we, as we knew it happened, it came in like a lion, um, and it did not disappoint. Early on in the event, Friday morning, we did Thursday weather event. Uh, the lower tiers followed suit fairly quickly, so that was good coordination between all of us to make sure that we're coordinated in our efforts there. Uh, and then throughout the event, there were some pickups, there were some issues. Uh, the largest, most significant issue at this event is when it happened, um, had this have happened this weekend? Um, had this have happened this weekend? We, we wouldn't have had the issues we have regards to people traveling on roads, people not adhering to our warnings with how unsafe it was. We, we won't, we wouldn't have had that, or it's unlikely to have the extent we did. It happened during the Christmas break, people were going to travel and there was very little we could do to stop that travel. Uh, the messaging that was sent out, and Sarah will speak this early, was clean, was clear, do not travel. The OPP set up in their sites, the municipality set up in their sites, it was out there. Uh, we ended up, as we all know, using the provincial location system, again, getting that message out there. People were still going to travel because. That was what really gets this spent. Uh, some of the learning we took away from this, um, and then I'll pass it off to Sarah and John. Um, you know, we, we have to put a coordination between the OPP, stakeholders. So to that end, I've already started working with the OPP. Uh, on what we're going to call Winter Weather Committee, uh, that will be struck up in the fall. Uh, they've actually asked if I could have that committee for the first year, I guess, uh, which I candidly agree to. Um, I don't want to be the weatherman, but at the end of the day, we want to make sure we've got a group of people together uh, that we can talk early on, uh, talk with who's at the table, who we need to bring to the table in specific events. So that's going to be struck up in September. We will include the city of Stratford and St. Mary's, Town of St. Mary's. Uh, there were some gaps uh, between specifically my role and the emergency manager in those two areas. Um, so we recognize that. Uh, so we're going to bring them into the to that table as well. Uh, some of the other things the OPP have already said, started to set up um, a listserv of sorts that will help with both roads open and roads closed. Uh, it's a very simple, very basic PDF document that they will check off. Um, you know, essentially, Highway twenty-three to Millsex to Mitchell is closed. They'll send this out, they'll email this out to the respective stakeholders, uh, which includes many people from the Lord County, Works, myself, uh, Communications, all the right people at this point, I believe, are on that email listserv and will get the notifications for roads open. Which was one of the gaps. So that that's sort of a high-level recap from my end. Again, I'll pass off Sarah and John for their respective areas.
Sure, thank you, Rick. I won't add too much more. Um, the information's before you in the report. I think one of the items I'd just like to mention is that it can be very difficult to control the spread of misinformation during an event like this. And we do know, however, that people are turning to the county, the OPP, and other trusted sources for this information. And there is a lot of information out there during events like this. Part of the challenge can be educating the public on where to find the accurate information, particularly when we have um, road jurisdictions that the public may not be aware of. Of course, the county is home to MTO-level roads, county roads, and local roads, um, and conditions can change rapidly. Um, and I think, you know, obviously, we want people to be uh, safe on the road. Um, but we understand that we can always do a better job of communicating the resources that are available. Um, I included a table uh, toward the end of the report that does include some of the resources that are out there. Um, and I know we're committed to working with our emergency management partners as well as Public Works to help assist get this information out there, not just in critical times, but to build up the education uh, so that the public knows where to go and where to find the accurate and uh, and credible information during during a storm. John?
Thank you, Sarah, and through the warden. Uh, I think from, you know, from a public works perspective and perhaps from the OPP as well, um, it's certainly in an event like this, it's much easier to close all roads. Uh, it's another thing to start opening them up. And and so I think that was one thing with this event that we we certainly noticed, recognized, and perhaps can do better in in the future for future events of long duration is when it comes to opening up roads, uh, um, it just takes a lot of effort between not only the municipalities involved or the road authorities, but also the OPP. And um, that that's something that, as far as the communication thing that we need to work on in getting it there a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from members of council? Counselor Orr?
Through the warden. Thank you for the presentation. I'm actually feeling a bit better about having a team together, um, working on the communication issues. I think that was um, I really want to highlight that you're going to do scheduling, because I do think when people are looking on the internet, they're not, okay, this was posted forty-one minutes ago, this was posted four hours ago. If we could put on, um, this will be regularly updated at such and such and such a time. I think that's key because people are looking. The other thing, I know we we push people towards Twitter. I'm wondering if we could push it to all of our social media platforms. Um, just because there are people probably in this room that don't have Twitter. But I I want to see it on Facebook, on Instagram, and everything, like, everything's the same. But those are my comments. But I I am appreciating that you are taking that seriously. And yes, you can't control people, especially around Christmas time.
Um, through the warden, I if I can just comment on on your note about Twitter. Um, I do know we have uh, our Twitter feed embedded into our website, just so everyone is aware. If you're not a Twitter user, you can view the stream of tweets, but certainly investigating a common schedule, particularly during significant weather events, I agree, would be a helpful option for people to be able to predict when those updates will be received.
Okay, other questions? Counselor Aitchison?
Just a comment. Warden, Counselor Orr's, we're both, not everybody's on Twitter or Facebook. I'm one of them. Okay. But I did, I'm not on Twitter and not on Facebook, because if I wasn't, I read some of the comments, it would just get you in trouble. I'll be honest with you, like, I'm just being honest with you. So for me, the best, most effective thing you did in that storm was when the emergency alert went out over the cell phone. So perhaps if it's going to be that bad, and I know those are tough to get out there, but that, to me, that, everybody has a cell phone. Everybody does email, and everybody does text, and everybody does everything. They're not necessarily Twitter and Facebook. And I think the older you get, you'll see less and less Twitter and Facebook users, but they're also the people that are maybe more on the road because they haven't got as much to do. Just a comment.
Hey, anyone else? No? Okay, we have a motion that council receives a December twenty-two Significant Weather Event and Road Information Communication Report for Information. Moved by Counselor McDermott, second by Counselor Trunkowski. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you very much for your report. Okay, the next item is Health and Safety Policy Statement. And I believe Crystal is joining us this morning for that.
Right, through the warden. Good morning, Warden and members of council. I'm Crystal Holmes, for those I haven't met yet. Um, the report before you pertains to the county's health and safety policy statement. On an annual basis, management, the Joint Health and Safety and Council are to review this statement. And we are asking today that council approves the twenty-twenty-three Health and Safety Policy Statement as written in the report before you. I should note there were no changes to the twenty-twenty-two statement. I'd also like to highlight that the Health and Safety Policy Statement is part of our due diligence at the county. It commits us to a safe and healthy health place for all. Um, next slide, please, Sean.
Yeah. I'd also like to highlight some health and safety highlights from twenty-twenty-two. So over the uh, over the past year, we reviewed and updated the safety data sheet inventory, looking at all the chemicals in the workplace and ensuring that uh, workers have access to this information. Uh, we continue to do our monthly health and safety inspections. We offer standard procedure training for non-union staff. We uh, look at all incident reports that have been reported to us and look at any trends that we have and uh, work to mitigate those issues. We are holding space for health and safety at each staff meeting by promoting a safety moment. And we've talked about uh, mental health, physical health and safety, heart health, et cetera, and also safe driving during the inclement weather times. And we've also provided support to local municipalities um, through inviting them to various training opportunities at the county and uh, working and collaborating on various health and safety policies. Um, I look forward to twenty-twenty-three and continuing to foster and promote health and safety in the workplace at the county. I welcome your questions and thank you for your time.
Okay, questions of the report? Counselor Orr?
Through the warden. Just a quick question. Do we ever talk about the right to disconnect?
Yes, through the warden. We did uh, talk about the right to disconnect when the policy came in.
And that is in here. I didn't see it.
Oh, sorry, it isn't on the commitment. It isn't in the commitment. It speaks to um, physical health and safety, mental health and safety. Um, but with all new hires, we do promote uh, the policy when they start, and it's all on SharePoint for staff to review as well. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Trunkowski?
Uh, thanks through you, Warden Naggetts. Uh, Crystal, uh, in the policy statement, um, I was curious about the worker's right to refuse unsafe work. Is that normally covered in the policy statement, or is that covered elsewhere?
So through
Safety uh, um, in our safety program?
Yeah, through the warden. Um, we do talk again at orientation about the three basic rights under the Occupational Health and Safety Act. And one of them is the right to refuse unsafe work. Um, so those three basic rights are in Occupational Health and Safety Act. So employees can enact those at any point.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? See no questions? We have a motion that council receives a Health and Safety Policy Statement Report and that council approves a twenty-twenty-three Health and Safety Policy Statement. Moved by Deputy Warden Callum, second by Counselor Smith. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Crystal. Okay, now we're going to move to Corporate Services, and the first one is our February update. And with Lynette away, Lori's going to take that.
Thank you, through the warden. Uh, and that's actually on vacation. This is a great week for her, uh, to some of her family. Um, this report is a housekeeping report. You see it on a monthly basis. This one is for the February activities in the divisions under the Corporate Services portfolio. It demonstrates at this time of year, it's a very busy time for the Corporate Services divisions as they continue with their day-to-day activities, project adjustments, and training. Of note, staff will be attending the local municipalities to provide an overview of the county's forestry program as well as the multi-year accessibility plans. I'm happy to take questions, or I may have a net follow-up with the additional detail on specific items if you have those.
Okay, any questions on this report? See no questions? We have a motion that council receives a Corporate Services February twenty-twenty-three Update Report for Information. Moved by Counselor Kesenberg, second by Counselor McDermott. All in favor? Carried. Okay, now we're going to move to the twenty-twenty-two Statement of Renumeration and Expenses for Council Unappointed Committees. And Cory, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Warden Naggetts, uh, and council. This is our annual statement for renumeration for expenses for council for twenty-twenty-two year. Um, this statement is required by the municipality and in this black to report on what council had been renumerated through the twenty-twenty-two year. Um, this report, uh, the appendancy in the report will be put on the county's website. Um, post uh, this, if you have any questions, we have answered.
Okay, any questions of the report? No questions? Okay, we do have a motion that council receives a twenty-twenty-one state, oh, I think that should be twenty-twenty-two.
Correct.
Statement of Renumeration and Expenses for Council and Appointed Committees Report. Moved by Counselor Orr, second by Counselor Duncan. All those in favor? Carried. Thanks, Cory. And we'll move to uh, Public Works, and we have Facility Projects Update. John?
Um, through you, Warden, um, just maybe suggesting if you'd like to take a break at this point in time or and I can get set up. I do have a presentation that I'd like to uh, show council as part of this report. And that may take some some time. Uh,
Okay, we'll take a five to ten-minute break.
Okay? Thank you.
Okay, we're back at it, and we're going to go now to our facility project update. And John, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden Naggetts, and morning, council. But this report is just updating our two major facility projects that we have on the go. Uh, the first one, the courthouse elevator project, um, it provides some pictures in the in the report, so that just kind of shows you, we finally got the uh, block elevator shaft completed. Uh, you can tell you that we now have reached the top. Uh, and actually, the hoist beam has been installed this week, so um, some significant progress over the last month. And however, we're reaching a critical stage in this particular project. And that's the actual installation of the elevator components. And we expect those components to be delivered later this month. And installation of that will take likely six weeks. And one of the problems we're going to have here is we've got two sessions of Superior Court trials going on during that timeframe. And uh, certainly, this work is going to be quite noisy, and in all likelihood, we will not be able to perform work during during those trial periods. So we have informed the the justice of the peace and things like that uh, of of this work and that we're going to try and uh, do this quietly. It's it's not going to be quiet. We we are adjusting our hours of work with our uh, contractor in their uh, sub adult elevators during this install. So we will be starting work much earlier in the morning and hopefully getting the real noisy stuff done by ten AM before court starts. Um, however, we could be shut down for the remainder of the day. So this could take a lot longer than six weeks. Uh, we'll just see how it goes. And these are some of the battles that we've had throughout this project, uh, just getting through Superior Court sittings and also debate court as well. Um, we so we're sitting about a couple of months behind schedule from the last time I updated you on this project. I've indicated in the report, we're probably looking at completion in May. Um, I'm probably going to be extending that until further next update. So um, in all likelihood, it'll be uh, into June or potentially the summer, just on uh, on just how we make it. Sometimes these court sittings are over within a matter of days. They're scheduled for a couple of weeks. Uh, the first one is three weeks, the next one is two weeks. Uh, the previous one was, I think they were over within a couple of days. And we were able to get back work, but we just don't know that sort of until until that time. So very difficult to schedule uh, with that. Um, we are on target as far as the budget goes. We are, uh, we're going to report that we have had some change orders and some to the two or thirty thousand dollars. There are some still outstanding change orders that are to be approved. And in all likelihood, we will likely use up all of the hundred thousand dollar contingency that we have for this project by the end. Uh, if there's any questions, we'll do the project. I'd be happy to answer now.
Any questions? Nope, no questions.
Thank you. I'll move on then to the five here on Reno and Connecting Link Edition. Um, and I've got a presentation here for you today. So this is uh, what I'm trying to do today is sort of uh, update council and of course, inform our new couns, inform our new counselors of this project. Uh, the next major step in this project will be going out for construction tender. And so the next thing you will likely see before you is results of those construction tenders. So I think it's important just to recap the design of this project, which council approved back in November of twenty-twenty-two and directed staff to prepare the final drawing drawings and go out to construction tender. Uh, so we just want to go over the scope of this project, what you're um, when you see these numbers from the construction tender, that you know what uh, what's all involved with that. So today, I'm just going to show you some of the floor plans, the design. The design is almost complete. Uh, we were hoping that design drawings would be done by tomorrow and that we'd be going out for building permit with the city of Stratford. Um, I did just get an update this morning that we are a bit delayed, and some of those plans will not be ready by tomorrow. So hopefully next week we'll be uh, continuing on with that. I'm going to show you some floor plans and renderings today. The renderings are just to give you an idea of what this will look like. It's not necessarily exact, and there's some sort of colors missing and things like that. But it'll just give you a very good idea of of what this project will look like. So welcome to the future Perth County Campus. Uh, this is a rendering here showing the uh, Connecting Link Edition and the renovated five Huron Building. Uh, the site plan here. Sorry, I'm just going to get something off my screen. Uh, the site plan here, we just noted a number of things with the site plan is uh, site grading. So there is quite a slope on our property here, and we have a lot of things And we have a lot of things to deal with as far as the design for drainage and things like that and as well existing utilities. As part of this design, I know we showed you back in November, we've created a back walkway uh, around, around the Five Huron Building and then tying back into the proposed new addition Connecting Link. Uh, that back walkway will help access the, uh, the one set of stairs that are at the back of Five Huron Building and also access at the back of the Connecting Link. Uh, the parking lot we're looking to redo, uh, that could be a separate item within the construction tender and to be done as a final stage of this project. Uh, we are also looking at uh, doing a sidewalk that's out in front and along the front of the parking lot, uh, with, with this particular project. This is the main floor plan of the Connecting Link and renovated main floor of Five Huron. Uh, early in the design of this, we were looking at an elevator within the interior of the five hundred, Five Huron Building. Uh, early on in the project, that changed just due to some of the complexities and costs that would be be associated with trying to put an elevator within the building. Uh, we also taken into account some of the existing utilities electrical within the building to do so. So we've moved that elevator into the Connecting Link Edition and just much easier to construct and build in, in, within the new build. So that was done. Um, next up is the firewall and we have a firewall here uh, between Five Huron and the Connecting Link Edition. And that was necessary, uh, because of the fact that courthouse as it currently stands is a two-story building with a basement. And that, that's considered a basement because, uh, a portion of that floor is below grade. Well, now we're adding on to that story and we're creating more square footage that is above grade. So that now makes the courthouse a three-story building, which now requires that to be either be sprinkled or as we've done, provided a firewall, uh, here between the between Five Huron and the Connecting Link. That certainly does add cost to the project, however, um, probably uh, insignificant compared to the cost of sprinkling, uh, the courthouse. We have some different floor elevations. So there's a different floor elevation between, uh, Five Huron main floor, the courthouse here and the boiler room here. Uh, so to tie that in, we had to make some, some changes with the Connecting Link design. Uh, most of the Connecting Link is on the same floor level as Five Huron. And then we have a ramp or a step down to get into the courthouse. Uh, the next thing that came up was, uh, sort of the juxtaposition. And what I mean by that is how do we connect an architecturally significant hundred and thirty-five-year-old building to a somewhat architecturally insignificant sixty-five-year-old brick box? And so that was one of the things that, uh, I'm very pleased with our architect who came, came up with the idea to sort of mimic the one side of the courthouse and carry carry that angle throughout, uh, the Connecting Link and then into windows, uh, within the Five Huron Building. I seem to be having troubles with the, my mouse here, but, uh, uh, here we've sort of mimicking the, the side of, uh, the window and, and also in the Connecting Link. So they're, they're on the same plane. So Five Huron does not sit on sort of the same grid, if you will, as the courthouse. And just to tie everything in better, we've done that. Uh, access became an issue through the design of this pro- project as well as security. So the scope and design of the Connecting Link kind of changed, uh, midway through this project to provide better security and access to all areas of, of three buildings. Or three areas of the building. Um, the existing utilities also became a factor, uh, things like sanitary and electrical and gas, um, where they, where they are currently and trying to move things and or upgrade. Uh, maintenance, it was another thing that we took into consideration. How do we maintain that? And I'll maybe talk further about that in, in the next slide. And certainly collaboration in our public-facing work units. So in the design of the workspaces, uh, we've taken a lot of that into consideration and I'll get more into that, uh, with the next slide. Here we've got a close-up of the Connecting Link Edition. We have a central reception and we have a space for POA fine payments. And they currently don't, their processes won't allow them to sort of occupy the space and do fine payments from them. But, uh, we, we do, we are building for the future and we are building for security. And the best place for that will be within the Connecting Link. And as their processes allow, we will move that into this area here. Um, we have public washrooms that are required and they sit within the, in the connecting link condition. We have, uh, branding walls that will be used, uh, in, in this particular facility. And also taking into consideration, uh, sightlines because we have controlled access, uh, into both the courthouse and into the Five Huron Building here. So again, security, we, uh, designed to have separate and secondary exits from central reception and from POA into the Five Huron Facility, which is controlled access. And we are also looking at, uh, uh, heating the sidewalk and entrance out front just from a maintenance and and the liability perspective, uh, to allow us a little bit ease in our winter maintenance in the night. And also accessibility has been taken into account here throughout the, the addition and the renovation. This is a rendering of what the Connecting Link may look like and this has gone through a few different little design changes and things like that. We don't have necessarily all the colors and in here incorporated. Um, and this picture here just so shows you some uh, previous renderings that might give you another, an idea of what, what these spaces kind of may look like. We have the main floor plan for the Five Huron Building and here we have, uh, planning and economic development and tourism staff. We have a spot for legislative services, which also works in central reception. So we have easy access for them. Um, we have, uh, some hoteling desks here that could potentially you, be used for people coming in from other departments who need a place to work for the day and or students that we have in the summertime. We've created a large meeting room here on the main floor. And, uh, and as well, we have the planning and economic development, uh, and tourism managers over here in offices. The C A O is located over here with a meeting room that's adjoining the C A O office and also access for others if they want to use this small meeting room for, uh, more informal meetings. H R is located over in this corner of the building, uh, an I T closet here. We have the C M C Communications, uh, Hoteling Desk and Legislative Services over here. The Clerk's Office is here. A small meeting room, another or medium-sized meeting room here. And Director of Legal and Corporate Services in the office over here. A hoteling office, which again can be used by, uh, s- staff that need an office for the day and, and come in and use that. Uh, the, we have existing stairs uh, that lead down to the basement. That's currently the only access to the, to the lower level, uh. And we are, we, again, we're doing the walkway out back which make better utilizes this, uh, entrance here. With this, uh, project, we, we do have a, an open sort of a, a project wall here and a collaboration space where staff can get together to take a look at what's, what we have on the go and to meet and discuss projects. Um, we're also incorporating certain noise attenuation and or weight noise within these spaces just to control uh, some of the noise and. Here, we're just looking down the, the hallway here. Uh, this is the medium-sized meeting room. And just giving you an idea of sort of the open office areas along this wall here are, uh, glass walled offices. Um, just giving you an idea of what this space may look like. This is the lower level plan for Five Huron. And just some things that we had to take into account and do some redesign is utilizing the existing, uh, wall for that as most of the electric panels and everything like that and also incorporating, uh, I T server room here. Um, we, we were planning or looking at a second exit. We do need a second exit from this lower level. Looking to utilize maybe the window well over here, but as we develop the, uh, walkway over here, there was not the room. And it was all logical since we moved the elevator over to this location. But the second, uh, some stairs and entry into the lower level would be combined with that. Uh, one thing in our original design, we had a big area over here that was used for storage and or future, uh, space needs. Um, through the design changes and, and, and scope of the project, uh, that's certainly created a much less space within this facility for storage and that is being relocated over in this area here. We acknowledge that, uh, this lower level does have low ceiling height. And so that will be exposed and we'll have low pro- profile fixtures and exposed conduit and ducting on the lower level. So that sort of led into the design and type of our H V A C systems. Uh, we've made some changes to the lunchroom and washrooms down on the lower level here, which we'll go over in further detail on this slide here. And this just sort of shows the furniture layout and office layout of the lower level. So again, entry either here through the stairs, here through the stairs forth by the elevator. We come in and we have a a little waiting area here with, with some lockers and a bench. This is a wellness room here that we've incorporated into the design. Space where somebody take a moment, uh, can be also used for, for other needs such as, uh, prayer, uh, a break, um, or just, uh, a need for solitude or to, to regroup. Uh, we have a large lunchroom in here with, uh, facilities that will be accessible by all county staff. Um, facility supervisor and, and facility staff are located down in this area here. We have a large meeting room in the lower level that is, uh, with glass, uh, walls here. Some hoteling desks again for people who are coming in and working and or students and or future expansion of staff. Washrooms are located over here. And again, we're trying to use the existing washroom loc- location. We don't have any washrooms down below. We've utilized washing locations that are currently upstairs and then as well, uh, downstairs here. The I T manager is located over in this office here and I T and G I S staff are located in open offices over here. And finance is located down here in, in this area. This is just, uh, a look down, uh, the hallway here and this is our large meeting room. And just looking in to sort of give you an idea of what this space might look like. Uh, opportunity for branding on, on the wall down the hallway here and just indicating some low-profile uh, ceiling, uh, fixtures for lighting, noise attenuation and and again, some of the duct work will need to be run along this ceiling. Looking the other way and just, and we're, we're going to go with a more muted, uh, uh, frame. So more of a, like aluminum or silver frame for our offices and things. The black looks a little bit too much like a jail or, uh, uh, so we're going with some more muted tones. So this is just an updated rendering to kind of show that. And again, a rendering of the outside of the building and what this potentially will look like. So our progress to date. We've done the geotechnical investigation and site survey. Our design process is complete. And last year we qualified eight contractors who will be, uh, part of the construction tender process. In November, council gave direction to proceed with the final design plans and to go for tender for construction. As I said, uh, you, I was expecting it, the plans to be completed tomorrow. Um, that's not going to happen likely sometime next week. Uh, we've awarded the Project Management Services contract at the last council meeting. And on underway is the Designated Substances Survey. Our budget for this project in twenty twenty-three, we budgeted four million dollars. Approximately three point six million is earmarked for construction. The remaining budget is for design cost, project management and furniture. When we first started this project a couple of years ago, the original budget was two point one million. That was in January of twenty twenty-two. Uh, back in November, late last year, we did an updated class D estimate. That was part of the presentation to council at that special meeting in November. And that class D estimate, uh, was at four point eight million. If you recall, a lot of those increases were due to, uh, the increase in square footage, both in the renovation and connecting link. We were dealing with the inflation and certainly increased labor and material costs. Uh, so a lot of market pressures were increasing that, that project from two point one to four point eight million. Along with that class D estimate, there is a variance built into that, uh, of potentially up to twenty-five percent. Um, of course, as you can see, I'm being, uh, positive and optimistic that that will be on the uh, lower side and not the upper side of the four point eight million. So that's why we budgeted here for construction at three point six million and an overall of four, four million dollars. Again, another shot, uh, from a different angle here of what this looks like uh, from the outside and including sort of the jail property here that's, uh, in the background. So our next steps. And we need to submit the final design plans to the city for building permit approval. And I've already sent the plans into the Accessibility Committee for their review and we meet later this month to review that with them. Uh, tender for construction was hoping to get that out next week. It will likely be the week after. And, uh, we anticipate awarding the construction contract in late April or May. So in all likelihood, I'll probably be bringing you at this point in time the tender results, uh, the first meeting in May. From there, we would establish a construction schedule and we're currently projecting this project to take approximately eighteen months. Uh, from there we'd go for site preparation, mobilization, demolition and construction. And just to note that we do have a combined generator project, uh, that will be tendering out that will provide backup power to both courthouse and the Five Huron Connecting Link project. And that concludes my table. Just another angle here of, of what, uh, our project will look like. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for John? Counsel Trunkowski?
Uh, thank you, Warden, through you. Um, John, just something, when you did the previous presentation on the courthouse, something just kind of twigged in my mind. The words critical path schedule. The words critical path schedule. It sounded like your elevator portion of the courthouse was on the critic uh, schedule. So I'm curious on this project, if any elements of the construction have been identified as critical paths on the critical path.
Through, through the warden, I guess, I think, you know, once again with, we're obviously going to be working sort of through this construction project and um, that, that poses its problems with not only our staff uh, and P O A court, but also our tenants, uh, the Ministry of Attorney General and, and the Superior Court sitting. So uh, when we go through to tender, certainly we will be outlining that there, there may be periods of time throughout this project where construction may not be able to proceed just due to noise and things like that if there is a trial going on. So we've worked through other projects that, where we've remained it within the facility. Um, back in twenty fourteen, we did the slate roof. And through that, that project took uh, a lot longer just because of working through trials at that time, things like that. So just couldn't proceed with the construction. So yeah. Some of those items will be involved in this project here is uh, um, timing and things like that and, and how we work construction schedule. Port is out through the summertime and hopefully we take advantage of that to take, to do some plans in this work.
Okay, go ahead.
Just one supplemental question, Warden. So, um, on the tender documents, will there be a specified completion date or maybe you're still working on how to how to frame that in the tender, in the tender documents? Or, or will you specify a fixed completion date or will you, will the contractor provide their completion date or maybe you're still contemplating that, how to deal with that?
Through, through the warden, we would typically uh, provide a completion date and uh, likely that will very much, you know, we're kind of trying to be conservative with the eighteen months for construction and taking into a number of considerations like potential court schedules and things like that. So, um, we will look to provide the completion date. We did the same thing with the elevator project and we didn't need that to. So, we'll, from, we're, we will provide a date so that it includes the contractor build their, their schedule.
Thanks. I, I don't want to, I don't want to complicate the, the, this work can be complicated. So I didn't want to create any, uh, create further complications with my questions. I was just, was curious how, how you would work around those, those details. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Excuse me. If no other questions, we do have a motion that council receives the facility projects update report. Moved by Captain Warden Callum, second by Counsel Trunkowski. All is in favor. Carried. Thanks, John. Okay, we're going to move on and we're moving on to council reports. Uh, anyone, uh, then we have bylaws. We have none, none for this meeting. Any notice of motions? Other business? I have two or three things here. Um, first of all, when we uh, appointed everyone to their committees, uh, Todd and I were uh, pointed to the health unit. And in the meantime, they've changed their meetings. They used to be the first Friday, now the second Friday. And that conflicts with my Western Ontario Wardens meetings. So I've only been to one health unit meeting, just so everyone knows. I don't know if there's someone else that wants to sit on that committee. I'm thinking Todd's getting there a whole lot more than I am. So if someone else wants to sit on it, great. If they don't, I guess we have one reptile I can get there. I think uh, I can't be there in March. I can't be there in April. I can hit May's. I don't think I can go to June's either. So, anyway, I just wanted everyone to know that. Um, and if there's someone that wants to uh, take that committee off my hands, let me know and we'll go from there. Uh, secondly, I should have did this one first. Uh, we want to con, one of our own again. We want to congratulate Tyler. He's uh, now a certified municipal officer. He's got his designation. And so this is through his academic and work experience in municipal government. So congratulations, Todd. Todd, we're all very proud of you and we thank you for what you do. So, and then the third thing, uh, I did attend the Western Ontario Warden's uh, meeting last week. Glory did too, in that stormy Friday. And uh, so it was an in-person meeting and because of the storm, a lot of us didn't get there. It was um, I didn't realize that when I walked in, I made quorum. They were pretty happy to see me. So, so they could uh, do their discussion. So we had Barry Field was there and he gave us an update on, on Swift. And the uh, A G M for Swift is going to be held on April twenty-eighth on Niagara on the Lake. And then we had Kate Burns, our executive director. She gave uh, Burns Gallagher, she gave some uh, uh, reports as well. And I think one of the things that we talked about was uh, good roads, plan to build safer rural routes, rural roads and that address municipal liability. And we're sending correspondence about this to the Ministry of Transportation, the Associate Minister of Transportation, the Attorney General and the Premier. And then we had Justin Baumberg. He's the Western Ontario Warden's manager of government relations. And, and that he gave an update. And then we adopted a motion for homelessness resolution, which is presented by the um, A M O, calling on the province of Ontario to address the housing and homelessness crisis uh, that they had in their report. So. And then the other thing we talked about was our strategic priority session. And I know it's been out there what our strategic priorities are. But we lost quorum before we got to that because one of the members had another um, item that he had to go to. So even though it's been in the paper, I've heard now too, our priorities are not quite set in stone yet. And that's going to happen tomorrow. We're going to have another meeting via Zoom. So hopefully everyone can attend that meeting. And so, um, just so that you all know that, that the priorities aren't quite set. And when they are set, then we're going to have a meeting with all the M P and M P Ps on the fourteenth of April and, and Alvin County is going to host that. And we're going to present to them the priorities of the Western Ontario Wardens. So I don't know if there's any questions on any of that, where I've been or what I did. If not, we do have a need for a closed session. And we do have a motion uh, to, to go into closed. And it says at Perth County Council, move into closed session at approximately at forty-four A M in accordance with section two thirty-nine of the Municipal Act S O two thousand and one, C dot twenty-five to consider security of municipal property acquisitions slash disposition of municipal property public works and also labor relations and H R. We need a mover in the secondary, moved by Counsel McDermott, secondary Counsel Herson. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, so thank you, staff. Okay, we have bylaw number three nineteen, thirty-nine nineteen, twenty twenty-three. A bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation of the County of Perth as regular meeting held March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three is read a first, second, third time and finally passed March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, moved by Counsel Ora Second. Counsel McDermott, I wouldn't even look in that way. All in favor? Here, can the meeting be adjourned at eleven twenty-eight, moved by Counsel Herson? And second by Counsel McKenzie, all in favor? Carried.